Thank you, Mr. Marriott. Now, Christian Rush, sorry about that.
Mayor Williams. Mayor Portion Bifer.
Here.
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 Can I get a motion to excuse Mayor Mark Williams? Mr. Marriott.
Yes, I move we excuse Mayor Williams.
All votes been cast. Six to zero with Mr. Williams being excused. Moving on to petitions, or excuse me, the approval of the minutes of the April seventeen, two thousand and seventeen city council meeting. Any corrections, adjustments, changes? Seeing none, we will leave those stand as they are written. Moving on to petitions, recognitions, and communications. Mr. Allard.
Would the members of the Orvada Economic Development Authority come down to the podium? Ever since nineteen sixty-three, the President of the United States has issued a proclamation during the first week of May announcing Small Business Week. And the council would like to join the President in issuing also a proclamation. Whereas, and I'll read this to you, then I'll bring it down to you. Then you can introduce yourself and make any comment you want to make. Whereas America's progress has been driven by pioneers who think big, take risks, and work hard. And whereas from the storefront shops that anchor Main Street to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstone of our nation's promise. And whereas this country's twenty-eight million small businesses create nearly two out of three jobs in our economy, we cannot create jobs and spur economic growth in America without discussing ways to support our entrepreneurs. And whereas Orvada supports and joins in this national effort to keep America's small businesses do what they do best, grow their business, create jobs, and ensure that our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and city council, the City of Orvada, Colorado, that April thirtieth through May sixth be designated as National Small Business Week and dated first of May seventeen and signed by the mayor and all members of city council.
My name is Jody Thomas. I'm with First Bank here in Orvada, and tonight I'm also representing the Orvada Economic Development Association. I'm a member of their board.
I'm Alicia Spalding, the owner of Faust and Tool. We're a small manufacturing company on the western side of Orvada, and this is really a great honor to be able to accept this. Thank you.
And we do have a video to present to the group tonight.
They're thinking big, working hard, taking risks, and contributing to our community and culture. They're small businesses. And since nineteen sixty-three, each President of the United States has proclaimed the first week of May as National Small Business Week to recognize entrepreneurs and small business owners defined as companies with fewer than five hundred employees. From storefronts to cutting-edge technologies, small businesses bring their energy and passion to our communities and create nearly two out of three jobs in the nation. In Orvada, every business is a small business. There's never been a better time to support small businesses in Orvada. Please join us in supporting our local businesses who have invested in and supported Orvada, created jobs, and boosted our economy.
So, on behalf of the Orvada Economic Development Association, we'd like to thank the city council for your support. And I know that both Alicia and I are very proud to be associated with this community. Orvada has a lot of really great things to offer, and we have a lot of very strong businesses.
We absolutely agree.
So, thank you very much. And also, you know, they're the backbone of our community. I think all of us visit some sort of small business within our community for all day long. So, again, I think they're the backbone of everything we do, and they make Orvada unique and its character. So, thank you very much. Next up, Ms. Ford.
I'd like to have the representatives from the American Legion Auxiliary Unit One-Sixty-One come up to the podium. This proclamation designates May as Poppy Month in Orvada. The red Flanders poppy was first described as a flower of remembrance by a World War I Colonel who wrote in pencil on a page torn from his dispatch book a verse describing how the poppies grew among row on row of graves of soldiers who had died on Flanders battlefields located in western Belgium and northern France. In nineteen twenty-three, unemployed and disabled veterans began to produce artificial poppies. From this beginning, the Flanders Field Poppy Promotion was born, and since that time, proceeds raised through the promotion of the Flanders Field Poppy have been used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans and the widows, widowers, and orphans of deceased veterans. I have a proclamation dated today which states, whereas the sacrifices of those who have lost their lives, their health, or their livelihood as a result of their military service are rightly the concern of all citizens. And whereas the annual sale of poppies by the American Legion Auxiliary Unit One-Sixty-One offers an opportunity for the people of this community to express their solicitude for those unfortunate persons who have paid more than their share of the cost of freedom. And whereas the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the City of Orvada, Colorado, that the month of May be designated Poppy Month in Orvada. The Orvada City Council encourages all Orvada residents to participate in Poppy Month and to wear a poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked or lost their lives in fulfilling their obligations as American citizens. The Orvada City Council recognizes the merits of the American Legion Auxiliary Unit One-Sixty-One, and this is dated this first day of May twenty-seventeen, signed by the mayor and all of city council.
And if anyone wants to take pictures, you're more than welcome to come on down and take pictures down here closer to the dais.
I want to thank the members of the city council. As she already mentioned, Flounders Field. The poem that goes with Flounders Field is, "In Flounders Field the poppies grow, blow, between the crosses, row on row, that mark our place; and in the sky, the larks still bravely singing, fly scarce heard amid the guns below. We are the dead; short days ago we lived, felt dawn, saw sunset glow; loved and were loved, and now we lie in Flounders Fields. Take up our quarrel with the flow; to you from failing hands we throw. The torch be yours to hold it high, if ye break faith with us who die. We shall not sleep, though poppies grow in Flounders Fields." Then either one of our national auxiliary members or one of our state auxiliary members found a poem on Facebook this weekend, and I'd like to share it with you. Also, National Poppy Day is May twenty-sixth, in case you wanted to know. The poppy. I am not a badge of honor. I am not a racist smear. I am not a fashion statement to be worn but once a year. I am not glorification of conflict or of war. I am not a paper ornament, a token; I am more. I am a loving memory of a father or a son, a permanent reminder of each and every one. I'm paper or enamel; I'm old or shiny new. I'm a way of saying thank you to every one of you. I am a simple poppy, a reminder to you all that courage, faith, and honor will stand where heroes fall." Thank you, on behalf of the American Legion Auxiliary One-Sixty-One. Thank you.
Thank you. I think this year we have little support helpers this time. I don't remember that the last few years, so. Do they want to come up and tell their name to who they are? Yeah.
We try and pick new poppy princesses every year.
Oh, okay.
This is a different batch from last year.
Okay, girls.
What's your name?
My name's Claire.
Hi, Claire.
And this is?
Laney.
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 And the princess in training is my, is Leanne.
Leanne. Well, congratulations, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
That was very nice.
Thank you.
You did a good job.
Next up, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. The month of May twenty-seventeen is Mental Health Month. This year's campaign is titled Risky Business and will educate the public on habits and behaviors that increase the risk of developing or exacerbating mental illness, or could be signs of mental health problems themselves. These include such diverse risk factors such as risky sex, prescription drug misuse, internet gaming addiction, excessive spending, marijuana use, and troublesome exercise patterns. The intent behind the theme is to raise awareness of the risks that these types of behaviors present, especially to young people, to prevent individuals, to help individuals detect early warning signs, and to provide resources for prevention and early intervention. Mrs. Schnitt is here. Did I say that the right way?
Yes, may I say a few words?
Yes. Well, I have a proclamation to read.
Okay.
So, let me read the proclamation, and then, perfect. And then I will come down and present this to you. And then, please, by all means.
Thank you.
Rita, have you forgotten how this works?
Whereas, good mental health is essential to the overall health and emotional well-being of all children, youth, adults, and families, and promotes a healthy community. And whereas, one in five people in our communities experience a mental health condition each year. And whereas, increased focus on the prevention of mental health conditions and substance abuse disorders among children and adolescents through screening and early intervention helps improve lives. And whereas, the stigma against mental health conditions prevent many people from accessing care. And whereas, when mental health problems are detected, early and treated, people can recover and maintain a healthy and independent life. And whereas, the City of Orvada is dedicated to improving the health and well-being of its citizens by ending the stigma and focusing on the integrated role of mental health in all of our lives. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Orvada, Colorado, that May twenty-seventeen be designated Mental Health Month. And we call upon all to recommit our communities and resources to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, providing appropriate and accessible services for all, and making mental health a priority, dated this first day of May twenty-seventeen, signed by the mayor and all members of city council. And I just want to make a comment that I've heard before that it's unfortunate that people who suffer from mental health don't obviously get the support, which is why we're doing this. And someone likened it to someone who breaks their arm and they have a cast. Everybody walks up and says, oh, what happened? Are you okay? But that person who's struggling with some sort of challenge, it's not, they don't wear it on their sleeve. And when they make a comment that they may be suffering with mental illness, a lot of times people back away and aren't sure how to help. So, I'm glad that we, as a city, are behind you in making sure that we're supporting you in the efforts to help prevent and help those who need help. So, I'll come down and present this to you now.
On behalf of the Jefferson Center for Mental Health, I would really like to thank you for issuing this proclamation and recognizing the importance of mental health and substance use resources for our community. And this is on behalf of the board, staff, and clients of the Jefferson Center for Mental Health. Mental health problems and substance abuse are the leading causes of disability in the United States. They are more common than cancer, diabetes, and heart disease. And I don't think a lot of people recognize that unless they've dealt with mental health problems. The Jefferson Center provides a full continuum of service including mental health and substance use treatment, school-based counseling, wellness programs, and community programs such as the mental health first aid and suicide prevention. We invite the people in the community to attend those presentations so they can learn more about mental health. And we truly value the support of the City of Orvada for issuing this proclamation and recognizing mental health, and I'm glad you feel it's important as I do.
Rita, it was nice seeing you again. And also, the Jefferson Center for Mental Health does a lot for our community, and we are very happy that you partnered with us in many aspects of the city and what we do with our police department and so forth. So, again, thank you for you and your business and organization.
It's my pleasure to be a part of them.
It's nice seeing you again, Rita. Next up is public comments on issues not scheduled on the agenda. We give three minutes for each speaker, and we have a couple speakers tonight. Julia Morrison, why don't you come on up and give your name and address?
Hello, my name is Julia Morrison. I live at seventy-eight twenty-five Barbara Ann Drive in Norvada, zip code eight zero 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 four. I have lived in Norvada my entire life. I went to Swanson Elementary School. I teach there now. Graduated Orvada High School, two thousand and seven. Go Bulldogs. The fact that last week council members and the mayor dismissed out of hand Nancy Ford's proposal to engage the community disappointed me and actually angered me because this is something that we, as citizens, have a right to engage in. We have a right to have a voice in our city. And we voted against fixing roads that we all know are bad, and if that doesn't prove to you that we don't trust you with our money, I don't know what else we could do for you. That's all.
Thank you, Julia. Next up, I have Joyce Richardson, if you don't mind coming up and also giving your full name and address.
I'm Joyce Richardson, and I live at sixty-five twenty-one West Sixty-Ninth Way in Norvada and have lived there for almost twenty-nine years. And I just wanted to say that I was disappointed to see on the city news video that the council was uninterested in pursuing a more detailed survey of its citizens as well. I think we do have a problem in this city. I think there's, the people I talk to anyway are not happy, as evidenced, about the roads, and that was a past. I think the giveaway of the sales tax to corporations like Walmart and Hilton are a big problem. And for those of us who are of modest means, it seems kind of ludicrous that that kind of money goes to those big corporations. I know they're developing the city, but you're giving that money back to them, and they don't need it like the city does. And I think when the city, with the roads as bad as they were, just out of hand said, no, we're not doing it, we don't want that kind of sales tax in the city, and we don't want to pay for it, it should be not a giveaway. So, I would really urge you to think again about doing a more detailed survey of the citizens of Orvada. And I think Nancy Ford's idea was really, really good, and I would hope that you would give it another look. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. And I know, I believe we left it, as we will be discussing it during the budget discussions for funding. Next, oops, excuse me, next up is new business. We have a few things on the consent agenda. We have a resolution, R seventeen zero four-three, a resolution authorizing, accepting a special warranty deed from the State of Colorado Department of Higher Education by and through the State Board of Community Colleges and Occupation Education for the use and benefit of Red Rocks Community College for a portion of the Lee Street alignment pertaining to the Orvada Ridge Apartments Number Two Development Project. Also, R seventeen dash zero four-four, a resolution authorizing an Eleventh Amendment to the Maintenance Service Agreement for the Orvada Public Safety Information System by and between the City of Orvada and security, government, and infrastructure, and a division, excuse me, a division of Integraf Corporation in the amount not to exceed approximately seventy-five thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars. Also, Resolution seventeen dash zero four-five, a resolution authorizing a construction contract by and between the City of Orvada and Colorado Civil Infrastructure, Inc., in the amount of approximately one million four hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and two dollars for Star Acres and Oberon Acres Sanitary Sewer Main Installation, project number fifteen dash SR zero four, and Open Cut Sanitary Sewer Main Replacement, project number sixteen SR zero one. Also, Resolution seventeen zero four-six, a resolution authorizing a construction contract by and between the City of Orvada and Instaform Technology LLC in the amount of approximately one million forty-six thousand six eighteen dollars for twenty-seventeen Trenchless Sewer Main Replacement Project number seventeen SR zero-two. I'm looking for a motion for the consent agenda. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that consent items number R seventeen dash zero four-three through R seventeen dash zero four-six be approved.
Seeking approval of the consent agenda. The vote is six to zero with Mark Williams being excused tonight. Next up, we have a Resolution seventeen, excuse me, R seventeen zero four-seven, a resolution declaring approximately one point two acres of city property generally located near Fifty-Second Place and Carr Street to be surplus and authorize the city manager to negotiate the conveyance of such property. Mr. Marriott.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This resolution deals with giving the city manager authority to dispose of some surplus city property, one of which may be a trade with an adjoining property owner for sidewalk easement along Carr Street. That adjoining property owner is me, and so because of that, I would ask my fellow council members to please recuse me from this item.
So, Mr. Marriott's requesting being excused. Mr. Jones.
I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Marriott from this agenda item so he can recuse himself.
So, the motion is for Mr. Marriott, or the motion is to excuse Mr. Marriott from this one particular item, and he'll return after that item, correct? Okay. All votes have been cast. That passes five to zero. Mayor being excused, as well as Mr. Marriott not voting. Give it a second. Okay, Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mayor Portion Bifer, members of the council. The attached resolution, as already mentioned, authorizes the conveyance of approximately one point two acres of city-owned land at the corner, approximately Carr Street and West Fifty-Second Place, as shown on Exhibit A of your packet. It's important, I think, to note that this land was purchased in nineteen fifty-one to be used as part of our then groundwater municipal water system. However, in nineteen sixty-five, as we shifted to surface water and partnered with Denver Water, that land, that land that had groundwater wells on it was no longer necessary, and we've continued to own it ever since. The wells were discontinued in nineteen seventies, and the equipment was removed. Therefore, this land is surplus property. We are proposing that we make this, have the site declared surplus and the property made available for other uses and conveying the authority from the city council to me to negotiate the conveyance of the property for purposes that are consistent with our code. Disposition of surplus property, the possible uses include facilitating a current city project, put in sidewalk improvements in the vicinity of Fifty-Second Avenue and Carr, as well as other potential uses in association with conveying the remainder of the land of the Orvada Housing Authority for potential use for attainable housing. Staff recommends approval of this resolution. We would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Ms. Ford.
Mark, could you just review where the project for the Carr sidewalks are going to be according to this map here?
Yes. So, the map that Councilmember Ford is referring to is Exhibit A in the packet, and this map shows Carr Street flowing south to West Fifty-Second Avenue. We have received funds to put in a sidewalk on Carr Street in order to increase the walkability and the connectivity to the Old Town Orvada Rail Station. So, we are looking at putting sidewalks on the east side of Carr, north of West Fifty-Second Avenue, and that adjoins the property that is at the corner of West Fifty-Second Avenue. That's the property that Mr. Marriott owns, as well as the property, the subject property that we are declaring surplus tonight.
So, Mr. Marriott's property is what's south of the property that we're looking at right now?
Yes. Mr. Marriott owns two properties. He owns the properties that are right at the corner of the, that would be the northwest corner of West Fifty-Second Avenue and Carr, and then the adjoining property just to the west of that.
Any other questions? I'm assuming we're going to keep a little right-of-way to continue that sidewalk. I know that's probably the obvious, but.
Correct. That, in fact, on the property at West Fifty-Second and Carr, that's what we're negotiating for, is to acquire the right-of-way for that property.
But on the property we're conveying tonight, we're going to still keep our right-of-way to continue that sidewalk all the way up north?
Correct.
Okay. I know it's the obvious, but I just wanted to clarify it.
Yes.
Okay. I'll look for a motion, Mr. Jones.
One more clarifying question. So, giving the city manager One more clarifying question. So giving the city manager the approval to convey that land, essentially you're saying that we've got this piece of land that we don't have use for from the city's perspective and you'll then look to sell that or...
The land that I described as formerly used for groundwater, for the wells, we are not conveying that land, the entirety of that land.
Okay.
It could, part of it could be used in a, in a trade for the right-of-way, for the sidewalk. The rest of it, we would propose to look at for alternative uses, including the possible use of attainable housing.
Okay, you said that.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Looking for a motion?
So I'll, I can make a motion?
Okay.
So I move that R-17-047, a resolution declaring approximately 1.2 acres of city property generally located near 52nd Place and Carr Street to be surplus and authorizing the city manager to negotiate the conveyance of such property be approved.
The motion's for approval of the property. All casts have been voted. It's five to zero with Marriott being excused as well as Mr. Williams. So if we can go ahead and bring Mr. Williams back in, or excuse me, Mr. Marriott? So next up is our first readings. And Mr. Marriott has volunteered. So I'll get you right back in action.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 17-013, an ordinance vacating a portion of Candela's Parkway, described as tract M of the Candela's Commercial Filing Number One plat, generally located at the northeast corner of Candela's Parkway and Indiana Street. And I move that Council Bill 17-014, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain property along Ralston Road, generally between Yukon Street and Uppam Street, for the construction of street, sidewalk, utility, drainage, and/or related improvements as part of the Ralston Road Reconstruction Project Number 15-ST-30, be both approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and a public hearing date be set for May 15, 2017, at 7:00 p.m.
For first reading?
Excuse me, just a clarifying point. So I just want to make sure that I heard this correctly. The public hearing on May 15 is set for 6:30 p.m. Did I hear that right?
Yeah, I think we have a misprint here, but yeah, it should be 6:30 p.m., not 7:00 p.m.
Sorry about that.
Yep.
If you catch, thank you. That passes, oops, sorry, I should probably clear that vote.
Yeah.
Let you back in.
Yeah, now, now.
Now you can. All right, can everyone re-vote? Sorry about that. Okay, we got six to zero with Mr. Williams being excused. Next up, we have the public hearings. It is 6:33. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for Council Bill 17-012, an ordinance rezoning certain lands within the City of Arvada, 8200 Grandview, from the City of Arvada RL residential low density to RI one and two family residence, and amending the official zoning maps of the City of Arvada, Colorado, 8200 Grandview Avenue, ordinance number 4590. Anyone here to speak in favor or against this motion? So go ahead and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Pfeifer and city council members. We'll have Rita McConnell introduce this item.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Pfeifer, council members, this proposal is for a rezoning that will remove the existing legal non-conforming status of the structure. The Land Development Code does not allow for expansions to non-conforming structures. The proposal will result in the construction of a second-story addition. The zoning across the street and adjacent to the parcel is similar to the proposed zoning. Planning Commission voted for in favor of this request with two absent. I have received the affidavit of mailing and the posting log and they are in order. Case Planner Will Tucker is also in attendance to answering any staff questions. Staff does support this request as it is in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code. The applicant, Mr. Sean Sellers, is also in attendance for a presentation.
Mr. Sellers, why don't you come on up and give your presentation?
Bottom one, or middle one. Good evening. My name is Sean Sellers. I live at 8200 Grandview Avenue, Arvada, Colorado, 80002. I am the homeowner for this residence. Lived there for six years. We did the original remodel on the house as purchased as a HUD home at that time. We had the inkling that we would like to put a second story on, so we built the house with that design in mind. As they were saying, the lots to the east of the property are zoned RI, which is more conducive to the current house that sits there. The RL is non-conforming at this point with 25-foot setbacks from the east and from Balsam and from the north on Grandview. By rezoning it, it brings the house into compliance and also allows for the addition of the second story and addition off the back of the house as well. Other than that, our intent, I know some of the community's been kind of leery about the project just because of the two-family designation. It's my understanding from the city that that lot is too small to support a two-family residence. Also, our intent is just to build a second, single-family residence. We've also tried to keep the design within the aesthetics of the neighborhood as well. Really all I have at this point.
Okay, thank you very much. Is it, not, I forgot, totally spaced. Do I have any other questions? No? You're looking at me funny, that's why. Did you want to add something?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now we can go ahead and, let's see, we have up to speak Cindy Kreitzer. Why don't you come on up and give your name and an address?
Good evening. Cindy Kreitzer, 9200 Grandview Avenue, Arvada, Colorado. Mayor Pro Tem and council members, how are you tonight? First thing I want to say is, I had nothing to do with those two ladies. I don't know. I had no knowledge that they were going to come tell, tell you guys about citizen engagement. Just wanted you to know that. My comments about this ordinance were stated at the Planning Commission hearing and are included in the staff report that you already have, so you kind of get a gist of what I'm here to say. Basically, this could have gone before Board of Adjustment as a variance request and been over and done with long ago. I, we could have spared this poor property owner the time and expense of changing the zoning in what is, I know there are a few other properties that are, that are not low-density, but most of that entire neighborhood is low-density housing. And I think when you start changing zoning, you kind of confuse the whole point of having uniformity in zoning laws in particular neighborhoods. But, but at this point, we're past all of that now because the poor man has already gone through all this whole process. So although I'm not crazy about changing the zoning, I really do support the project because it's a great project and we could have done it just as easily with a variance to the setbacks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kreitzer. Next up, we have Nancy Young.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Young, 7706 Robinson Way, here in Arvada. Just to note, this house was built in 1899 on unincorporated Jefferson County at that time, which is why, of course, the setbacks may not conform to today's standards. I'm surprised our crackerjack planning staff chose to put these poor citizens through a very lengthy and very expensive process to rezone the property. There's a much simpler and far less expensive process in place that's available through the Board of Adjustment. They could have achieved the same thing much faster and at a far lower cost. What concerns me is it raises lots of questions in my mind. It should make every citizen wonder why. Is this the beginning of a program to rezone all the single-family lots in Arvada to some form of multifamily housing? This project, where it is, in the midst of all these single-family lots, certainly makes it look like it's the beginning of something else. Or is this the beginning of an attempt to eliminate the Board of Adjustment? I don't know, but the questions need to be asked, and I certainly hope that all of you start asking these questions. I would not want to see any other citizens put through this kind of a process when it's not necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any other comments? Okay. Mr. Devon or Mr. Daley or Rita?
I definitely, Rita, can answer the questions that I believe you would like to ask.
Exactly. Thank you very much, Mr. Devon.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Pfeifer. The approval criteria is very specific in the Land Development Code. It starts off by saying that variance application may be approved only if the Board of Adjustment finds that all of the following criteria have been met. And it outlines quite a bit. And in staff's review of this, we found it wasn't in conformance with the criteria, at least half of them. And I'd like to address some of them just as an educational value. The very first one listed is special circumstances or conditions exist, and it talks about exceptional topographic conditions, narrowness, shallowness, or shape of the property that are not common to other areas or buildings similarly situated. That's the very first criteria. And from that one, we don't really need to move on, but I really think that we just need to provide some more education on this matter. Criteria B, in determining practical difficulty, the Board of Adjustment shall consider the following factors. Whether that can be, whether there can be any beneficial use of the property without the variance. And we did find that there can be beneficial use of that property. Moving down to B7, whether the applicant's predicament can be mitigated through some method other than a variance. And we find that the zoning is that appropriate method that can provide that mitigation. Moving on to Criteria C, no variance shall be granted if the submitted conditions or circumstances result from the actions or prior actions of the applicant. Now, this is kind of two-part. The existing structure has been there, so that wasn't created by the applicant, but the addition on top of that could have been built to the setbacks. So it was the applicant's choice to build it within the setback requirement. Item number E, if authorized, a variance shall represent the least deviation from the regulations that will afford relief. Again, that second-story addition could be built to the standard. So that was a two-part test. And then the last one references the existing, the existence of non-conforming uses of neighboring land, structures, or buildings in the same zone district, or permitted or non-conforming uses of land, structures, or buildings in any other zoning district shall not be considered grounds for the issuance of the variance. So this, again, is a similar situated property as the adjacent properties, and we didn't find any deviation that would require that relief. So that was the findings. And again, relating back to the very first qualification, where it talks about the Board of Adjustment must find that all the following criteria have been met, we didn't find that to be the case, and so that's why we recommended the rezoning rather than the variance process.
All right, thank you, Rita. Before I close, a public comment. We also received an email from Steph DeJonge, who is sharing that she was not in favor of the rezoning of the lots. So I just want to make sure that was put into record as well. I'll go ahead and close the public comment, look for questions from city council. If I don't see any questions, then I'll look for motion. Oh, got quite a few. So we'll start with Mr. McGough.
Okay, thank you. Just want to ask a question, just to ensure that we clarify this. There was a statement that is something, a question, whether this might be the beginning of some rezoning that would allow multiple housing or multiple dwelling units, perhaps duplexes in these properties. And the response has been that the size of the property would not permit that at any rate. So that there, with the rezoning, there's no further, there's no issue with the use being changed. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. The lot would have to be 9,000 square feet and it's currently 7,700 square feet. So it's beneath what would be allowed for two-family dwelling.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, I just have a follow-up question on that. It seems like the applicant has no intention of making it a two-family dwelling property and seems like that that's also the concern of some of the residents who have been willing to weigh in on it. Is it possible, and this is a question for Mr. Daley, is it possible to add as a condition of approval that, that only a single-family residential structure may occupy the property? So that that carries forward, so that 50 years from now, somebody can't build a duplex either?
If, if that's council's desire to do that, you can, you can do that if you feel that that's necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jones?
So following in the same line of questioning, it's, is it rezoning blocks or rezoning, it sounds like we're rezoning more than just this one lot? Or is it just, does this just pertain to this one lot?
It pertains just to this one lot, as well as to the center line of Balsam and to Grandview.
Okay, so the neighbor next door couldn't arbitrarily make a decision to add a second floor and then put two families into that, again, because of the 9,000-square-foot lot requirement, and it doesn't apply to them?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Ford?
My question was answered. It was just this property that we're looking at rezoning.
Okay, Mr. Allard?
Questions of staff. I don't think it's a legal question, but this is not spot zoning? I noticed the Planning Commission, that term was never, never addressed.
No, this is not, this would not constitute spot zoning.
All right, thank you.
What, basically, just so that the record's clear on this, in going through this process, if council approves it, you're essentially removing the non-conforming piece of this particular property. So if, if in fact, staff had decided that going to the Board of Adjustment was the right way to go, yes, it would have run with the land, but there would still be a non-conforming portion of this particular property. By utilizing this process, in my opinion, the proper way to go, you're actually removing the non-conforming portion of this by simply rezoning it. And I believe that's why staff, in addition to the reasons that Rita gave earlier, this is, this is the right process to use and has nothing to do with the BOA.
Mr. Marriott?
If there's no more questions, I'd like to make a motion.
You may.
Okay. I move that Council Bill 17-012, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the City of Arvada, 8200 Grandview, from City of Arvada RL residential low density to R1, one and two family residence, and amending the official zoning maps of the City of Arvada, Colorado, 8200 Grandview Avenue, and also add the following condition, that only a single-family residence may be built on this lot with this zoning, be approved on final reading numbered 4590 and ordered published by title only. And so that's my motion. I'd like to make just a quick comment on it. I want to commend the applicant for taking this on. I remember very well when this was a HUD home, as I live very close by in the neighborhood, and how they've done just a beautiful job on this house, and I think their addition will be two. I think the, you know, the, this whole idea between whether using the Board of Adjustment or using zoning to do it is a little bit of a moot point because the condition on the ground doesn't change either way. In other words, either the house is in the same place it's going to be regardless of which way it went. And, and I think the additional condition on my motion of restricting this lot to a single-family residence only... lot to a single-family residence only doesn't harm the applicant at all, because as he stated, it's exactly what he would like to do, as well as alleviates any concerns that the folks who have any questions about this have. So I'm certainly going to be voting yes.
So motions for approval of the rezoning. If I can have your votes, please. All votes have been cast. That passes six to zero in favor of the motion, so thank you very much, and we're excited to see what your house will look like. Thank you. Next up, we have public comments. Anyone would like to speak again? All right, see, see, you're right at eye level, so seeing none. Reports from city council. Do we have any? Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, so I have a couple things. One is, I just wanted to report on our Transportation Committee. I'm the liaison for our Transportation Committee, and they've been working very hard on a number of things. One of the things they're looking at is where does their committee go from here? And they are quite a group. They've taken on a really good process to thoroughly look at all the different things the Transportation Committee could do, and try to choose a project to do that is both helpful to us as council, for them to act in their advisory role, and also meaningful and useful to the community. So I want to commend them to that and give you guys an update on, on what's happening. And then the second thing I have is, I'd like to make sure to encourage anybody in Arvada to please visit one of Arvada's small businesses. This being National Small Business Week is a perfect time to do that. All over the city of Arvada, not just Old Town, but Arvada has a great mix of unique businesses, extremely well-run and successful businesses, and for all of us, our daily buying habits are very important to the success of our community. And if everybody could find, seek out a new business you don't either go to regularly or maybe haven't been to, try to patronize them, you may very well be pleasantly surprised at what you find and change some of your buying habits. So with this being National Small Business Week, as I like to say, if you can find it in Arvada, buy it in Arvada. Thank you.
Thinking, see, thank you. Seeing no other lights, I guess it's to you, Mr. Devon.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Pfeifer, members of the council. Next, our next workshop will be on May 22. You'll have a presentation from the ARC, which is an organization that works with intellectual and developmental disabilities. They want to talk about the programs and services that they offer. Program and service impacts associated with the proposed federal budget. We wanted to make you aware of, of what might occur if, should the federal budget as proposed be approved. We'll give you an update on the Rocky Mountain Greenway project, and we'll give you an update on the Jefferson Parkway.
All right. And do we have a motion that you'd like us to make?
Yes, I do. The motion would be to cancel the July 3, 2017 meeting. That's obviously before July 4, and a potential long holiday weekend for the community.
Thank you. So Mr. Devon's asking for us to cancel one of our business meetings. Do I have a motion? Mr. Jo, well, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. I'd like to move that we cancel the July 3, 2017 business meeting.
Motion to cancel July 3, council, or business meeting? All votes have been cast. That passes six to zero. You'll have the night off, Mr. Devon. Okay, reports from the city attorney? None. Okay, we stand adjourned.